Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Wow, it's great to see so many people out tonight. Let me... Ward 1? Ward means first, right? I want to begin by thanking Jim Bray for, one, such a nice introduction, and, two, for being a good friend over all these years. Jim himself, of course, worked for a very long time in the nonprofit sector. And I like to say, there's no exaggeration, he is a man who helped put HIV and AIDS on the map in this country. He showed how it could be done and should be done in the way he developed the Whitman-Walker Clinic, which became a full-service clinic in this city and became a model across the country. I well remember going to many events that I went to there, and there was Elizabeth Taylor, who was there as they were dedicating the medical clinic in her honor. And it was just symbolic of the leadership that Jim had provided to the Whitman-Walker Clinic and just moved it forward to become a national model. And he, of course, has become a model of a council member as well. Jim has been resoundingly, resoundingly elected. Not once, not twice, not three times, but a fourth time, right, Jim? Please join me in saluting your council member, Jim Bray. Again, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. This is our fifth town hall meeting in a series of eight. We will be in every ward by the time this month is out. We have already been in Ward 5, where we had a thousand people who came out. We were thereafter Ward 3, where we had about 800 people who came out. We then went to Ward 7, where we had about 1,000 people who came out. And just last Thursday, we were in Ward 2, where we probably had somewhere between 6 and 800 people who came out. And it's obvious tonight that Ward 1 is right there holding us on with the... What was that, Jim? Overflow. 450 plus the overflow. And how many we got there? About 900 back here, right? Again, I'm delighted to be here. I see a gentleman I'm going to acknowledge back here in the second row. And he was out there on the hustings with us, making the case for how we move this city forward. He was a candidate for mayor as well. I got to know him well and looked forward to working with him in the future also. And that is Mr. Ernest Johnson. Again, the purpose of this is to really give you some feel for, you know, who I am, and frankly, to hear from you. The thing that I want most fervently out of all of this is for us to be able to figure out ways to be able to work effectively together, together as one city. I wear this pin every day because that is a goal of mine, to see us take all of the richness and our diversity and turn it into, to turn it into a productive experience for our city. So that the 600,000 of us, and we do have 600,000 people now, and I think the census is going to confirm that we have even more than 600,000 people in this city, Jim, that the 600,000 of us can work together to make this not only the greatest city in the nation, but make this truly the world's capital, and we are the greatest city in this world, the District of Columbia. I ask you to work with me in accomplishing that goal. Now, let's face it, let's be honest with ourselves, that we are in some ways a divided city. We are geographically divided, we are economically divided, we are socially divided, and yes, there are data that suggest we are racially divided. There are people who suggested that the land, the election in which I was involved, demonstrated that there were racial divisions in the District of Columbia. And people have suggested that that was, that was the basis for the election. And frankly, one of the things that I've said to people is that I think that there were a lot of people who didn't vote for me, who simply don't even know who I am. You know, we ran a five-month campaign, which is relatively short for a mayoral campaign. And yes, I was the chairman of the Council of the District of Columbia. And as much as one would like to think that everybody is paying attention, Jim, not a lot of people are paying attention to all of these things. And there were people who don't even, don't even know who Vince Bray is. And so, why would somebody vote for me as opposed to somebody they know? People are going to vote their comfort level. And one of the reasons for these town hall meetings is to get out and be able to talk to people, to hear from people, to let them know what kind of administration a Gray administration will be. And frankly, one of the most uplifting parts of this has been the number of people who have come out. When you add up the numbers of first town, first four town hall meetings that I mentioned, they are over 3,000 people who have come out for these town hall meetings. And the numbers will be even greater when we add in Ward 1. Jim, but we have 3,000 people in Ward 1 tonight, right? So, again, I ask you to work with me. One of the things I'm trying to assure people is that people who have questions about education reform, and that is virtually everybody, that I heartily support education reform in the District of Columbia, and I supported it even before I was a member of the Council of the District of Columbia. Education reform started before 2007. I think the most significant form of education reform that we have had in the District of Columbia, frankly, is charter schools. Charter schools began in 1996, 1997. They had a few hundred, a handful of students, right, Sonya? And thank you for hosting us here tonight in your lovely facility, and thank you for the work that you have done with Paul's Rosario Schools. And a handful of people enrolled in charter schools. Today, the last count that we got last week, we now have the most robust charter school approach in the nation. We have 29,600 students who are enrolled in charter schools in the District of Columbia. And what that changed, what that changed was a change in governance approach. It said that each school would be able to make the decisions for itself. And I've heard Sonya talk about the frustration that she experienced trying to move the DC Public Schools, trying to get decisions made, and now you are in a position to be able to make those decisions for yourself because each charter school is its own governing body. But we also recognize, right, Jim? Until we got to 2007, we worked with Mayor Pitti to try to be able to begin to make changes in our DC Public Schools. I was proud to be able to take the legislation that came over from the mayor, work with my colleagues, and get it through the council. My only disappointment was that we didn't get every council member to vote for education reform, but we got almost everybody. The council had tried to do this back in 2007 with Mayor Williams, and it was voted down. But by 2007, I think people had realized it was time to do business a different way. And the changes that we made were very, very significant and will endure and will be built upon in a Gray administration beginning in 2011. What did we do? First thing we did was we changed the Board of Education. We now have a state Board of Education, and I have a member of the State Board of Education right in front of me, Dolly Love Wade, who is a member of the State Board of Education. And they make decisions. Yes, we do have state responsibilities here for which we are, which we have to ensure our discharge properly. And Dolly and her colleagues are responsible for helping to guide those policies. But in addition to changing our Board of Education from a local Board of Education to a state Board of Education, we did some other things. We said that buildings and ground, which is an important part of the public schools, should go to another agency. So we created an agency called the Office of Public Education Facilities Modernization. And that agency is headed by Alan Lou. And if you all have been in some of our schools today, you can see the results of that. The hundreds of millions of dollars that have been invested in our schools, and they look phenomenally better in many instances, and we still got a lot of work to go, we're going to get that done ourselves. We took all the state functions out of the public schools and put them in another agency called the Office of the State Superintendent for Education. Now, that has a budget, what, Dolly, 400 million, 500 million dollars? And lots of race to the top money. Hopefully, we will make the race to the top. We took all the attorney functions out and put them into the Office of the Attorney General. We took out all the technology functions and put them in the Office of the Chief Technology Officer. What we did, frankly, was took the DC Public Schools from this size to this size. And we made it a lot more manageable in the process of making those changes. And we've now been working for three and a half years to be able to improve educational outcomes for our children. And one of the things I want to do, Sonya, frankly, is to be able to bring about parity between our charter schools and our DC Public Schools. Why should a child go to one approach to education and be worth more over there and less over here? We should look at this in the eyes of a child. Every child should be worth the same, no matter what public education option that they pursue, be it DC Public Schools or be it charter schools. We're going to work to try to see that buildings are more available to our charter schools. We've got public schools that are unoccupied, they are underutilized, and we've got charter schools that have no place to go. We ought to be making those buildings and that space available to our charter schools so that every one of our children in public education, the 73, 74,000 of them, have a first-class building to be able to go into every day and be educated. Yeah, I think those of you with John and Bruce Monroe, you know we've been working on that. I certainly am very familiar with the Bruce Monroe situation. And Jim, you and I are going to continue to work with him, is that right? I have... I got it, okay, thank you. I'm very familiar with Bruce Monroe. And thank you for being an advocate for the education of our children at Bruce Monroe and everywhere else. I have been excited, I have been exhilarated, BB, to be a champion, to be a champion for early childhood education in the District of Columbia. Almost three years ago, some of us came together and said, "You know what? Public education is more than K through 12. And if we make an investment in our children when they are younger than five and six years old, we will see the returns of those investments in the years to come." We made a bold commitment. We said we were going to try to get legislation through the council that would say that every child who was three and four years old in the District of Columbia would have a place in a formal education program in the district, in our public schools, our charter schools, or our community-based organizations. We said that we would get it done by 2014, and I'm proud to stand here tonight, for those of you who don't know, and say that we got it done four years early. At the end of September of 2010, every three- and four-year-old in the District of Columbia whose family wants them to be in a program has a seat in a public education program, the first city in America to be able to make that program. And now, we're working on education grants to those who work in the field of early childhood education. Our Office of the State Superintendent for Education didn't get the job done, BB, as quickly as they should, right? And so, we said, "You know what? We're sick and tired waiting." And so, I went to my colleagues, I went to Jim and others and said, "You know what? We need to find another way to do this. And we can't sit around. We sat around for 18 months. Where are you willing to get this program started? We even had the money in the budget already, right, Jim?" So we said, "Let's find somebody else. Let's go to our state university, the University of the District of Columbia, and see if they can get it done." And it didn't take them 18 months to get it done. It took them for something like 45 days in order to get the program done. And we're now offering scholarships and education grants to our people who work in this field so they can improve their skills. And we now are starting to offer grants, especially to our community-based organizations, to be able to upgrade their facilities. One of the things I want to do as mayor, and yes, I know we don't have any money, but there are things you can do without having new money. You figure out how to spend what you have for efficiently. Find efficiencies, right, Jim? Isn't that what we do? Find efficiencies. I want to create universal access to our infants and toddlers. Wouldn't it be wonderful to be the model of the nation in terms of how we provide early childhood education in this city? And you know, and I know, that the day will come when we will reap the dividends of those benefits. Because our children will be more ready for kindergarten and first grade, and second grade, and third grade. And over time, we're going to reduce the dropout rates, and over time, we're going to increase the graduation rates because these kids will have the kind of head start, early start, whatever kind of start you want to call it, that will allow them to be able to benefit productively from an education by the time they get to kindergarten. So many of our kids are already lost by the time they get to the kindergarten and first grade. I ask this question all the time. Who said that public education starts at five years of age? Anybody near you got an answer? I honestly don't have one. Yeah. That's an answer, but it's not an answer. And then, and then when it's all over, somebody tell me why, why Theodore Roosevelt? I give up now to make that greater of an impact because then the high school after him has a early childhood education program. So, I believe we should fundamentally redefine public education. It should start at a minimum of three years of age, and we should do everything we can, especially for those parents who are socially and economically challenged, to give their children an opportunity to be involved as early as six months of age. And that's what I want to be able to do in a Gray administration. And yes, we have one of the worst financial education programs in the nation. And I don't have any hesitation about saying that. I spent many years, as Jim indicated, working in the field of disabilities. We spent an ungodly sum of money on educating our kids outside of public education. A year ago, we get the money, we get the totals for the fiscal year just completed, and putting kids in special education in private placements, private schools now, not the public schools, not charter schools, take that off the table. We spent on private tuition $166 million. That is an incredible sum of money. Another $90 million on transportation for kids in special education, and another $10 million on attorney fees. One quarter of a billion dollars. I know we can do better. And shouldn't every child have a chance to be able to go to a public education program and not be sent off to Arizona and Texas and Florida and all these places outside the District of Columbia that we can't even monitor? And we also need to begin to restore, we've made some gains, but we've got a long way to go. I wish somebody would tell me why we took vocational education out of all of our schools in the District of Columbia. There was a time, yes, I grew up in the, I grew up in the city. I'm a product of the public schools in the District of Columbia. And at one time, my name is Mr. Pitti, we had seven schools that provided vocational education, including Phelps, which I know you graduated from. Now, we got Phelps reopened, we renovated that, all those other schools are gone. We got a few, a few vocational programs at Cardoza. But we should be able to say in every one of our schools, it is a comprehensive high school that offers some element of career and technical education to our kids so that those that want to go to college or not ready to go when they finish high school will have a marketable skill to be able to go to. And I'm also pleased to have worked at the University of the District of Columbia. We now, for the first time in the history of this city, 14 months ago, we created the first ever community college in the District of Columbia. We have almost 2,500 students who are enrolled. A few weeks ago, we dedicated the Bank of School as a, as a campus for the community college. Last Thursday, we dedicated 801 North Capitol Street as the headquarters for the community college. We have PR arrows in southeast, and we have a commitment within a year to have a campus in every ward in the District of Columbia for our community college. We are going to take the functions of remediation and continuing education and workforce development out of the University of the District of Columbia, put them into the community college. Everybody who gets a two-year degree from the community college will automatically be accepted to UDC if they choose to go there, and UDC will become the flagship university that we envisioned many years ago. Because you see, we ought to be a city that offers a birth through 24 continuum of public education so that from the time a child is born until they become a young adult, they can see themselves getting an education in the District of Columbia. And we got to work to get people back to work again, right? This is a topic probably not just in this city, but all over this nation. Somebody said the recession is over. I wish somebody would tell me how they know. I haven't seen it. Anybody here seen the end of the recession? I have, and you do raise your hand because I want you to tell me what you've seen as the gap that is over with. But the funny, the odd thing is, odd thing is, in this city, we have more jobs today than we had four years ago, and we have more unemployment than we had four years ago. And what that says is there's a disconnect between the skill sets that our people have and the skills that are required for the jobs. And it's our, it's our job to be able to begin to connect those dots. And we're going to do it through career technical education, we're going to do it through the community college, and we're going to do it, frankly, through a reform Department of Employment Services that recognizes, that recognizes that his first job, it should be known as a place to be able to go to get trained and get a job, not the place where you go to apply for unemployment. We have, we have double-digit unemployment, 10.4% in the city. But when you go east, I live in Ward 7, in Ward 7, the unemployment is 19%. In Ward 8, it is between 30 and 35%. On any given day, you can go out on Martin Luther King Avenue, Jim, and see people walking up and down because they have no job to go to. And frankly, we have some opportunities, even in this recession, we have some opportunities we need to take advantage of, not just for the people on the east end, but all across this city. We have the Department of Homeland Security coming to this city and is starting now. There will be 14,000 construction jobs that will be developed over six years as a part of Homeland Security's location to the city, or to the southeast west side campus. There will be 20, there will be, excuse me, 14,000 permanent jobs, 22,000 construction jobs that will be created on the campus to develop Homeland Security. And frankly, if we don't take full advantage of that, we all ought to be on the next bus out of town because that will be a lost, an opportunity, a life which we have never seen in this city before. We have first source agreements. You know what first source is? Well, it isn't effectively implemented, in my opinion. We're cheap there. We need to say to people, "If you get a contract from the District of Columbia, you are required, 51% of your new hires have to be people who live in the District of Columbia." And we should say to people, "If you don't, if you don't comply with that, that's okay. That's okay. Just two things. One, you will never get another contract from the District of Columbia, and the one way you leave the plan with the law, you just had that taken away from you, so get out of town." I'm going to, I'm going to open up a question shortly. But, you know, I want to work also to try to get more of our first responders in the city. Only 19% of our police officers actually live in the District of Columbia. We ought to be able to begin to develop, as we develop new communities and other projects, we ought to be able to develop workforce housing that creates incentives for our first responders to live in the District of Columbia. And why, as a part of career and technical education, can't we put elements of first responder program in our high schools so that our 11th and 12th graders get exposed to being a police officer or being a firefighter and then go into the academies after that? And yes, the reality is that the consequences of this recession have hit and hit hard in the District of Columbia. We have cut budgets for the last two years. We're facing another $175 million, a shortfall, and frankly, it's going to get even worse than that. And we're going to have to come back to you all with some proposals, and I hope people will participate in helping us make the right decisions. Now, I haven't met anybody yet who didn't say, "We understand, Mr. Bray, get that budget balanced. But by the way, don't cut that chair right there. Don't cut that light out right there. Don't cut that pole off right there. Don't cut this speaker system off." And by the time you listen to all of it, you know what's left to cut? Nothing. Nothing. So, I need you to not only agree with me in principle that we got to have a balanced budget, but we need the people of this city to recognize that unless we can generate a lot more money than we're generating now, the only way we're going to balance this budget is by making some reductions. I don't want to do that, you don't want to do that, but we don't want to have a control board back in the District of Columbia either, do we? Now, I don't know what's going to happen at these elections nationally. It's, it's not potentially a pretty picture, is it, Jim? We may have, me, I, if there are any Republicans in here, I would apologize, but I'm not. If you want to become a Democrat, see me right after this video. But the specter of, the specter of the Republicans taking control of the House of Representatives is a harrowing one for us in the city. Because it means that we can have, start to have the clock rolled back on so many advancements that we've made. We have been blessed to have a gentleman have oversight for us in the Congress by the name of Jose Serrano. He is an outstanding congressman for the Bronx. He had it down to the Congress, down to the council, down to the council, just recently. And one of the things he said, he said, "I am the only person in the Congress of the United States who wants to give up power." And he said, "The power I want to give up is the power over the District of Columbia because every district resident ought to be able to make the decision for themselves, just like you can do with the rest of this country." Now, I don't know what, I don't know what the future holds. I hope that on November 2nd, we see the Democrats stay in place in both the House and the city. But if it changes, I think we're going to have somebody who tries to roll the clock back. And frankly, we have a choice. We can just sit here and take it and talk about, you know, come together, talk about it. it, wring our hands, and, you know, say, "Isn't that awful?", and "I'm sorry", and all that kinda stuff. Or we could stand up and fight. I've been to a lot of statehood rallies, you all, where there's some very dedicated people, among the 50 who show up for the rally, among the 75 who show up for the rally, and on a good day, 100. You know how many changes gonna take place with that kinda turnout and fight for statehood? Nothing. It's not going to happen. So, even if we don't get a change in the leadership of the House of Representatives, we need to be in a position to be able to stand up and make the case, that we not only wanna vote in Congress, we want a, two senators, we want legislative autonomy, we want budget autonomy, and we wanna be able to, we wanna be able to control and dictate just like everybody else. Why should we pay our membership dues and never get a membership card? It's time for that to be over with. We paid 3.6 billion dollars in taxes last year to the federal government, and it's time for us to stand up and fight for ourselves. People ask me, "Are you willing to go up there and meet?" Yeah, of course I'm willing to go up there and meet. But what better than a meeting gonna do, if I look over my right shoulder or my left shoulder, see nobody back there? I can tell you how the meeting will go. It'll be, "How are you, Mr. Gray? We're glad you're up here today. How's it going in the District of Columbia?" Really? Well, let us know. You keep us posted on how it's going, okay? And you know what that will amount to? Nothing. And yes, people have asked me, "Am I willing to go to jail?" I certainly am. I've been, I've, I've been a rattle-rounder on many fronts, not the least of which fighting for the rights of people with disabilities. And you know what? If they handcuff me and take me all by myself, Jim, they can find a jail cell for me. But you know what? They won't find a jail cell for 1,000 people if I have 999 people with me. So which will it be? It's up to you. It's up to every one of us. Which will it be? Do we stand around and wring our hands and say, "Isn't this awful? Whoa, I'm so sorry", or do we stand up and fight for ourselves? Is it gonna hammer overnight? No, it's not gonna hammer overnight, but it is never gonna happen unless the people of the District of Columbia stand up for ourselves. This country was founded on resistance, the taxation without representation, yet the hypocrisy of it all is that we stand right here in the nation's capital and have taxation without representation every day. And it's time for it to end, ladies and gentlemen. I'm prepared to lay it down. And so, it's Barman Gay, San Diego native Washingtonian. Barman Gay. Let's get it on, y'all. And I'm not gonna try to sing, because that would clear out the entire room. And so, and so, I wanna thank you all again for coming out. You, I can see what, well, these folks behind me can see it. All these seats are filled, we got people across the back of the room, we got seats up here, and we have an overflow room too, right, Jim? This is, this is the kinda stuff that makes a statement. This is not lost on anybody. And this is not about me, it's about our city. When we say that 700, 800, 1,000 people are coming out in every ward to talk about the future of our city, that makes a powerful statement. Don't let this be the last time you do this. Make it the first time for the future of the District of Columbia, and I promise you, if we stick together, if we fight together, you will see change in the District of Columbia. I didn't intend to get all reeled up in here tonight, but that's all right. And so, Richard, where are you, Richard?
I'm here.
All right, you gonna tell us what the rules are?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Okay. Aside from the audience here and behind you, we have another 100 people upstairs in an overflow room. So, we are going to be taking questions from the stage area. Roxanna, where are, where are, there's Roxanna, she'll be taking questions from the stage area. And Denise is over here, she'll be taking questions from that side. I will be covering this side, and also the people in the overflow room upstairs.
There are people in the lobby, too.
Yeah. Let's get a microphone out to the lobby.
Those of you in the lobby...
Yeah, the voices be heard!
I'm collecting questions from those upstairs, and those of you in the lobby, if you want to write down a question, I'll be happy to ask it for you. Chairman Gray, we do have a section in front for hearing impaired. We are also translating in two languages tonight, so if anyone needs a headset for translation in Spanish or in part, please let us know. And pardon.
All right, are we ready?
Yes.
All right, we got Roxanna over here. Roxanna has the microphone. All right, I will let you, I'll let you lead the process of selecting people and throwing into others with the mics and whatnot, and we'll try to do the best we can to answer questions.
Okay, we'll start with Roxanna.
Anything that's a hard question, I'm gonna let Jim Graham take it. Frank?
Good evening, all. My first question is, the homeless and housing situation that we have here in the city, what is your plan about sort of making the housing shorter here in the District of Columbia?
Well, as you well know, Frank, as somebody who served on the Housing Authority Board, uh, that's a very difficult question. Uh, I wanna commend Mayor Fenty for the work that he's done on the Housing First Program, uh, getting people off the streets, uh, into, uh, into housing. Uh, we need to do more about making sure that the people who are there, uh, get services. Uh, we really have three groups of people who are homeless in the city. We have singles, who are typically on the streets. We have families, and we have mounting numbers of families in the city. Uh, I think this time last year, we had about 35 or 40 families who were homeless. We're now approaching 200 families who are homeless, many of whom are in very difficult conditions at DC General Hospital. And then, and then we have, that's right, we have veterans who are among the singles, that's exactly right. And we also have homeless youth. And that's what I did when I worked for Covenant House. That's what Latin American Youth Center does, I see Lori Kaplan here tonight. That's what Sasha Bruce does, that's what Covenant House does. And that oftentimes manifests itself in different ways. And that is, a lot of these young people are often homeless for a long time, they move from one place to the other, one person's house to the other, until they wind up on the streets. And yeah, outreach like Latin American Youth Center, Sasha Bruce, and Covenant House getting them off the street. We are working, we are working, Frank, to try to get some of these families into apartments. But it's going to take the cooperation also of the people in this city. Uh, we can't, we can't say that we need to find homes for, uh, families and then just say, "I'm sorry, but not in my neighborhood." Uh, we gotta be able to get past that. We gotta be able to say that everybody should have a decent place to live. And I don't say that lightly, because I've heard it. I've heard it not just yesterday, but I've heard it for a long time in the city, that, "Yeah, Gray, we gotta get a place for these people to live, over there." All right, every neighborhood should be accessible to a family who needs a place to live. That's what I've been passionate, City, is about. We have, we have a waiting list of what, Frank, about 26,000 people in the District of Columbia. It is, it is, it is overwhelming. And we have a lot of tools that are put in place. I wanna commend Ward 1 Councilmember Jim Graham for the outstanding work he's done on rent control in the District of Columbia to try to keep... We have new communities, which we're developing, that's gonna create in part, uh, uh, housing that is affordable to those that, well, I don't wanna get into all this AMI stuff, average median income and all of that, you know, people's eyes will be blazing over if I start that. But at certain levels, income levels, that go all the way down, probably, what's 30%? That's probably about $30,000 for a family of four, right, Jim? That are affordable at those levels. We have something new called inclusionary zoning, that basically says, simply put, that if you wanna build a building, we'll do, you know, we'll give you something if you give us something. If you, if you, if you, if you will agree to build more units, if you will be, make more units affordable, we will let you build more units than you otherwise would be able to do. That's what inclusionary zoning is. We've got new commi, we got a variety of tools in the District of Columbia, and I wish I could say we are winning the battle, but we're not winning the battle. There are a lot of people who still need housing in this city, and frankly, one of the challenges is not just to find housing, is to try to get people back to work, so they can afford a place to live in the District of Columbia. So, we're gonna continue to work on both of those fronts, Frank, and we especially gonna work on the front of trying to get people the skill levels that they need to be able to take advantage of some of those jobs in this city. And we need to, especially, I wanna underscore what's happening with the private homeland security. Uh, we've also got new development taking place, a Walter Reed, as Walter Reed has converted, we got 62 and a half acres, uh, there, that will be opportunities for affordable housing, uh, new retail, a host of opportunities, again, that should be available for the people of the District of Columbia. You know, it's great that people wanna come here, but we need to take care of our own first, don't we?
For pupil allocations that are way below some of the other schools. What I wanna know is, as mayor, um, well, you see that Cardoza receives greater funding equity, and that that funding, um, wait, when it's given to the high school as, high schools, as it's passed down through the city administration, through the central office of, uh, public schools, down to the local school?
Well, first of all, that, I would, I wanna understand more about what's happened, because we do have a uniform per student funding formula that says that every, every high school stu, every school ought to receive the same amount of money in a high school for the students that they serve. It's about $9,000, and if Cardoza's getting less than that, I'd like to work with Jim, uh, to try to figure out what that is. I, I, if they're getting less than what they should, uh, that should be, that should be corrected, uh, right away. Sometimes that changes if the enrollment is lower than what was anticipated, or in a good situation, where the enrollment is higher than was anticipated. But, you know, simply put, you ought to be able to multiply the number of students times $9,000 and figure out what that school is entitled to. And the principal figures out, you know, how many teachers they need, and how much we fit into that budget. Uh, if they're, if you are aware of schools getting more money on top of that, some schools get, you know, they get grant money, you know, like, uh, like Title I money, for example, or Chapter I money, as it's variously called, because they have a number of students who, um, are from economically disadvantaged families, they may get money on top of that. But the fundamental funding formula should, is the same, it should be the same for every student in the District of Columbia. There are various levels. Uh, students with disability, students with disabilities, the, the money is higher for them, but for a high school student, an average high school student, it is the same amount of money per student for each school. And if it's different than that, I'd like to know what it is, and I'll be happy to work with you to try to figure out why there's such an inequity. Okay?
Okay, we have a question back here. From Bruce Monroe here.
Good evening, Mr. Gray. My name is Ms. Gray, and I am a...
Black your name.
Apparently you're at Bruce Monroe at Parkview. Um, for those who don't know, Bruce Monroe was closed in 2007 by Mayor Fenty and Chancellor Reed, and, uh, with the promise that the school would be rebuilt by fall of 2011. Uh, we have not seen any funds, um, in the budget for our schools to be rebuilt. Um, and I'm here speaking here for all, all of the vibrant parents and students here.
That's right.
We would like to know, as mayor, do you solely support our school being rebuilt? And how would you go about making that happen? Because we would love to be a part of that.
Well, I'd like to work with Jim. Uh, Jim has been very involved in that. I've been involved in it, we've had hearings on it. What I'm gonna do is ask the people if they would, I've read it, and if you can put it down, because the people behind you can't see. Those folks right there. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. The, the Bruce Monroe situation, uh, has been represented in a lot of different ways, uh, right, Jim? I mean, the school was torn down. There was supposed to be some kind of, uh, you know, private-public partnership that was going to be developed there. The students went over to Parkview. I know that there's money in the budget over a period of years up to 2018, I think, for Parkview. Uh, it's about $21 million, I believe, for Parkview. I think what we need to do, is I don't think we can do Parkview and, and Bruce Monroe. If it means that we've gotta reconfigure, you know, look at how we do the, uh, the dollars a little bit differently in terms of what we've designated for, uh, Park, for, uh, Parkview, then we ought to do that. And Jim, I'd like to work with you and these parents to try to get to the bottom of this, because they've been advocating for this now for probably over a year. And I know you've worked with them, we've tried to work with them. But I think we ought, we ought, you know, we, we need to come to a reality, and I don't think, unless I miss something, I don't think we can have two schools there. Uh, we're gonna have to figure out how to have one very good school that will serve the kids, uh, in that area. Uh, I drove past the site of Bruce Monroe, uh, just, just a few days ago, and there's a basketball court, and there's a park, and all of that out there at this stage. Uh, so I wanna commend the, uh, parents and others who are working on behalf of Bruce Monroe, but let's start out with the premise that we don't have the money to do two schools. Let's figure out what the best solution is, and work on getting that done.
Okay, we have a question from our group of state in the, um, overflow room, it's up on the third floor. Chairman Gray, what do you plan to do with the summer youth employment program?
Well, I happen to have some strongly-held opinions about the summer youth employment program. First thing is, I think that every kid ought to go to a real job. The second thing is, that kids ought to be, if they get paid, they ought to be asked once, to come every day. They ought to be asked to come on time every day. And frankly, they ought to be, as a part of their job, expected to do what other people do in the community, and that is, get along with the people that you work with. And we ought to use it as an opportunity, frankly, to teach kids life skills. You know, there ought to be a class every week where kids go and talk about the job experiences that they're having. Now, I don't know how much money we're gonna have for the summer youth employment program, uh, this coming year. It shouldn't be just about, just keep adding numbers, 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 numbers. It ought to be a quality experience for every child who's in that program. And it ought to be a real job that they go to. And when they go home, they ought to be able to talk about what they did that day. I've been out in the community, just like you all, and I see people with green shirts, and blue shirts, and white shirts, walking around, and I don't know what they do, and they get paid for whatever they do, walking around the community all day long. So, you know, we, we wanna improve upon that. We need a summer youth employment program, but it ought to be an extension of what our education program is every day in school. And frankly, I don't think we're gonna have an eight-week or a 10-week program. I don't think we need an eight-week or a 10-week program. The kids aren't roughing up by the time they get to the middle of August. We need a good, solid, six-week program that begins in the middle of June and goes into early part of August, and then that kid starts getting ready to go back to school again.
Behind you, Chairman Gray.
Welcome to Ward 1, Mr. Gray. Congratulations on winning the Democratic Party election. Happy to see you. If education is number one issue in the city, then putting our people back to work is certainly one hate. Uh, you're going in the door with the $400 billion deficit. Uh, I wanted to know if, uh, you are considering eliminating some luxury program, uh, the streetcar program, the convention center, hotel, so that we can free up, uh, some money to put our people back to work. And if not, then, you know, what would be your plan, uh, to raise money to bear the fund, the program that you're talking about?
Well, there's a lot of options. First of all, the streetcar, the streetcar program is not gonna do much at all for our budget, because remember, that's the capital budget that money is coming out of. Uh, and we haven't even started tapping into it yet. The streetcar program would spend $1.5 billion for over 20 years, between 2010 and 2013. Uh, and that will be capital money that comes, uh, out of the budget. Uh, it would be out of, money out of the capital budget in order to do that. Uh, the, the hotel, uh, also will be, uh, capital money that will be invested to do that. And frankly, we do projects like that in order to generate money for the District of Columbia. This hopefully, hopefully, the hotel will bring more business to the city. Uh, we have, we're, we're constrained right now in the level of conventions and conferences that we can, we can attract to the District of Columbia, because we can't handle the large shows, the, the ones that might attract 20, or 25, or 30,000 people to the District of Columbia. So that's the purpose of the hotel, it's not just to have, you know, an amenity to say we have a new building downtown, it's really a, an investment in economic development, uh, for the city. Now, as far as generating money is concerned, uh... Now, as far as generating money is concerned, uh, you know, the, the, eighty percent of the district's money right now comes from three sources, property taxes, income taxes, and sales taxes. One of the ideas that I have that I want to pursue, and I talk about it a lot, is trying to create the district as a financial services center. And what that means is, uh, you probably have heard me talk about it before, and that is, we have insurance companies in this, in this nation that are required to amass and keep large sums of reserves, hundreds of millions of dollars of reserves. And I often times ask people if they know what state those reserves are kept in, and people will say Connecticut, Delaware, New York, California, et cetera. Well, the answer is that they aren't in any state because they're not in the United States. Those dollars are being kept offshore, in the Cayman Islands, in Bermuda, and in the Caribbean. The reason is because they have such favorable tax treatment to sit offshore and keep those dollars there. Well, we've been working with Eleanor Holmes Norton, uh, several of us, and we've gotten her now in July, she introduced legislation that would create the same, same kind of favorable tax treatment here in the District of Columbia, uh, for those firms. Uh, what's the benefit? First of all, uh, there's no loss to the federal government, because the federal government isn't collecting anything now. There's no loss to any state, because there's no state that's collecting anything now. It would bring those dollars to the city for reinvestment in our own economic development here, it would bring those firms to the city, they would occupy, occupy office space, and it would bring jobs to the District of Columbia. So, I use that as an illustration of a specific thing that we can do, but also, we've got to start thinking about how we broaden the base of our economy, uh, in the city. We basically are a government city, and we are a tourism and a hospitality city, and frankly, if we're really going to grow, we've got to grow by bringing more people into the city, but we've also got to grow by broadening the economy. And wouldn't it be great, I don't think it's going to happen anytime soon, that we could get the benefit of what everybody else in this nation has, and that is to be able to tax income at its source, and that is the money that earns in the District of Columbia that is actually distributed out there. The proposed, uh, convention hotel, those are revenue in general were almost two hundred and fifty million dollars that myself and other taxpayers have to pay for. I just don't really see it as a priority when we have to go ninety thousand people out of work. And then we're, uh, proposing a one point five percent property, commercial property tax, uh, to, uh, fund the streetcar program. And I just think a combination of both of those things could be utilized to put our residents back to work in a more robust effort, more or less than an incremental approach. I, you'll find that's a certain idea, I think is great, but I just think those two priorities is something that I really would like to consider, is something that we really just don't need at this particular town. Yeah, I don't want to leave the impression either, Ernest, I'm not sure you would second this, but that we're not raising property taxes to support the streetcar program, it's part of our-
Was it, was it proposed one for tax, or was it proposed for commercial?
No, no, there's not, not, not a decrease in commercial property taxes, uh, we do that. Uh, and I would, I would invite you, because you follow this stuff pretty closely, and I want, I want to commend you for, uh, what you did on the campaign trail too. Uh, you, you ran a good campaign, and you were very active, and you came well-prepared to, to, uh, these debates, so I want to commend you for that. It was very, uh, it was very challenging and stimulating to be with you for, uh, four or five months, so I want to publicly do that.
You would really bring your best out of yourself.
Uh, the, 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 uh, Portland program, they have a streetcar program in Portland, and they put it through this area called the Pearl District, which was a very blighted area of Portland, and over about ten years, they have demonstrated that they generated about eight and a half billion dollars of economic development as a result of that. And I saw some of it, I mean, uh, there was this huge Safeway, for example, among many things that had been developed there, and people were using the streetcar system to go through, they could all get back on and, you know, and, and move around the city in ways the other way would. All right.
Denise?
Good evening, Mr. Gray. I'm J.C. Rosina with the Justice of Queens Police. Last year, a group of workers at Winter Prices, a Weber subcontractor, who does a lot of business with, with, with D.C. government, went out on strike due to low wages, poor safety conditions, lack of water on the job site, and mistreatment on the job. Despite promises that conditions have improved, the company continues violate health, safety, and prevailing wage law. At the Sheran Station, Route Six, project, uh, for instance, uh, workers are making half of what they are supposed to make. What will you do as mayor to ensure companies that abuse workers are held accountable?
Well, in this instance, I would like to know what the company is, uh, and, uh, I may be somewhat familiar with the situation, but I want to assure, uh, that I am. If people, if it's a district government contract, those wages are going to have been set in the, in the, uh, contract, they're paying less than what they were, they agreed to pay, they are in violation of the contract, and they should be, the contract monitors, um, should deal with that. So, I'd like to know what the contract is, what the, uh, agency is that got the contract, and who are they contracted with, and if they're not complying with the law, then the contract should be taken.
Okay, we have a question here.
Hi, um, my name is Justin Williams. And then, I go to, um, Theodore Roosevelt from high school, and I want to know how are you going to improve-
What high school did you go to?
Theodore Roosevelt.
Oh, Teddy Roosevelt, yeah. I mean, you mean, you mean the man who said everybody should start school at five years old?
No, I, I want to know how are you going to improve bullying and harassment in D.C. public schools, not only for LGBT students, but for all students in the school system? I said, how are you going to improve bullying, bullying and harassment in D.C. public schools, not only for-
Bullying?
Bullying.
Bullying.
Harassing.
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 Bullying.
Got it, okay, all right.
And harassment, not only for LGBT students, but for all students in the school system.
Well, you know what, I'd love to say there's a, a massive public answer to that, but I think you know that there is. Uh, bullying has been with us ever since we've had schools, uh, there, there are people, how many of y'all have ever dealt with a bully? You know the best solution to deal with a bully? Step to him. Step to him. I have seen a bully after they're back up, just step to him. And I've seen some of them, not just in schools, I've seen some of them in politics also. So, you know, uh, Councilman Harry Thomas Jr. just introduced today, uh, legislation to try to address it. Uh, I think, you know, and you mentioned the LGBT community in particular, uh, I think we have made some improvements in that regard. The city is far more accepting than it was ten or fifteen or twenty years ago, and we've made a lot of advancements in that area, we obviously have a long race to go. Uh, I think we need to, you know, among many things, we need to have diversity training, uh, in our schools, but we need to have classes, and, and accepting people that are different, um, than us. And I think frankly, people who bully kids need to be dealt with. Uh, you know, they, they need to be dealt with by the adults, and then they might need to be dealt with by other folk outside, you know, uh, outside of school. Now, I'm not promoting violence, okay? I'm just promoting self-preservation, Jim.
Okay, there's a question from upstairs. Chairman Gray. I have a salon on Eighteenth and Columbia Road, my customers always complain about parking. For businesses to survive on Eighteenth Street, they should be up to six-thirty P.M. on Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday should be free. How do you feel about our parking regulations?
I feel, I feel the same way, I'm bothered now. Unfortunately, we need the money at this stage. Uh, you know, the council, the council was very clear this year, um, there was an effort to raise the parking meter rates, when the budget came over, and the council said we're not going to do that, I think it was going to generate what, Jim, about three, three-point-two million dollars, and, uh, Jim and I and our colleagues worked together and said, we're not going to raise the parking meter rates, it would have gone, I think, to twenty-five cents for every five minutes under that code, it's still twenty-five cents for every seven and a half minutes. Uh, and we've got parking meters now, you have to put quarters in them until, uh, until ten o'clock at night, in some instances. Uh, I've heard people make the argument too, that it keeps, it keeps the folks turning over, but I don't know if I buy that. Uh, I, 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 I happen to agree with the person who says we ought to make this more business-friendly, because it will keep people coming into the city. There are people down who will go outside the city, because they don't want to spend the money on parking. We got it down to a science, we, once we got your last quarter, you better bring about a two rolls of quarters, right? Once we got your last quarter, we will make sure that five minutes after, put that quarter in, and we put a ticket on you when you shield that boy. So it's one of our best revenue generating, uh, experi-, we, we, we're not in a position to be able to reduce that at this stage, because we'd have to replace the income or something else, but it's at the top of my list of things, as we get to better times, and we will get to better times, as we get to better times, on the top of my list of things that need to be changed, to make our city more business-friendly. Small businesses are, are at the core, they are at the core. Give me some of those quarters, Veronica. See what I mean? Here we got a person with a handful of quarters, uh, sitting down here in the front. But we need to be more business-friendly, and, uh, our small businesses are at the core of the city, seventy to seventy-five percent of the businesses in this city are small businesses. And one of the ways to support them is to make it easier for people to access those businesses. And right now, our parking doesn't make it very easy. There are people who have, who have, uh, recommended that we have municipal garages, I don't know if that's the best solution or not, you know, it's a question then of what do you do with the land, do you turn it into a municipal garage, or do you do something else with it that might generate more tax revenue than a municipal garage would be, based on the meters and whatnot, that, you know, would be in a municipal garage. You know, we could have a computer test, that would be great. Um, how do you think we get that done?
Mr. Gray, first of all, um, thank you for hosting Carlos Rosario for tonight, it is very honored, very honored, so I'd like to all our neighbors to thank you. And also, thank you so much for the support that you give education, particularly Charleston, that is, and adult education, because without training the adults and, and teach them how to read and write, and workforce development, and put them to work, then our economy will go down in the drain. You have to, the parents need to know how to read and write and, and get training and hope, so that they can get jobs, otherwise, you cannot do it without adult education. And then, the other thing I'm going to ask is, when this is over, if it's okay with you, today is Bibi Otero's birthday, she's our sister. If, if we can sing, happy birthday to Bibi Otero Rosario. Happy-
Absolutely. And how old is she today, twenty-eight?
Yeah, sixteen.
Those of you that didn't hear that Bibi Otero's birth is today, is it today?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, would you all, at the end, when we finish, join me and say your happy birthday to Bibi? Of course, we're going to make her come down and stand while you all sit right. How are you?
Congratulations, I'm Pat Patrick, and present at the Adams Morgan Business Association.
How are you?
Very good, thank you, congratulations again. Maintaining businesses, one of the things our council member has done is put seven million dollars in the budget for the streetcap. Our streetcap in Adams Morgan is, uh, going on now, started about three months ago, and continued for another thirteen to fifteen months. Would you, with this talk about cutting back on the budget, and not enough money in the budget, this is something that maintains business, enables us to hire more people by, uh, by the success of the businesses. And so, I'm trying to listen from you, at least you look very thoroughly at the seven million in the budget, and to maintain it in order for us there in Adams Morgan on Eighteenth Street and Columbia Road, to maintain our businesses. And I just want to add one other thing, you mentioned about parking. In my thirty-eight years in Adams Morgan, we talked about the parking fees, I have never seen so many parking spaces available when these parking rates were, were high, were higher. Something's really got to be looked at. I know it brings in three and a half to four and a half million dollars extra, but there's got to be a better way, like certainly maintaining the streetcap, but we have a big job in front of us, we're prepared to help you all the way, but Adams Morgan, like many other areas, the streetcap, we don't want to suffer like some of these areas have, and we won't. So please help us at least by maintaining the seven million dollars.
Yeah, I think as we, as we figure out how we handle this, uh, the one thing we don't want to do is, is in cutting a dollar, lose a dollar of revenue within the course of it. So, um, you know, where there's, where there's economic, uh, revenue generating potential associated with those investments, those would be some of the last things that would be cut, because it just doesn't make good economic sense to make cuts in those areas. Uh, those things may not generate as much money, but probably be on the top of the list, to be honest with you. Yeah, no, he said that, he said, he said that, he said they're having a fundraising to be, speaking of revenue generating opportunities.
Okay, Denise?
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I actually live here in the neighborhood, and, uh, my biggest problem that I have here is the fact that when I come in from work, or when my husband comes in, he's handicapped, that we have a problem with parking. We are constantly in the evening, parking residential people actually different in illegal spaces, because the students that come here in the evening is taking up all the parking spaces in the neighborhood, and we are the ones that end up paying tickets, because we can't, we can't even park in our own neighborhood. I know I have addressed the issue here at the school about a year ago, to ask the students if they can, maybe they can transport them from a parking lot or something, they do have buses out here, I've seen them, but there is a real problem with parking in the neighborhood, not just in the commercial area, but in the residential even, areas as well in the evening.
Uh, I'm going to ask Sonia if she will join me in answering that question, since it's very specific to Carlos Rosario, I know they have a pretty big parking lot out here, uh, but she may have some ideas on how further to address it also.
Yes, and, and I really sympathize, uh, with the problem, and with they, with dealing with it. The first, and it's in the evening, because in the morning, it's not so much of a problem. Oh, here's Michael Brown. Uh, man, what we've done, we've done various things. Uh, we have purchased a bus and two vans, and we're transporting students, the bus goes all around this area, picking up students and, and then taking them back home. We also, uh, transport them back and forth from the metro, but the problem persists because we have so many. So what we're going to do, if the neighbor allows me, is to, that we would like to, in the play, uh, behind Centronia's playground, the tennis courts, uh, we would like to turn that into a parking, so that would alleviate tremendously the, the problem. And you know, the thing is that our students all work, there's nobody in this school on welfare, everybody works, and they come straight to work in the evening, but I, you know, I feel bad, because I wouldn't want that happening to me in my house, uh, you know, when I come to park, so let's work together and see, you know, uh, come and see me, in fact, I want to have, um, I talked to our ANC chairperson and told her I would like a meeting with the neighborhood, to see how we can work together and solve this problem, because we want to be good neighbors to you, we really want to be good neighbors. Thank you.
Somebody said, that's the spirit of one city.
Okay, we have a question from upstairs, by the way, Chairman Gray, I wanted to make sure you knew that the, um, room upstairs has video and audio, so they can see you and hear you.
All right.
All right, question from upstairs. Poorly implemented construction of roadways, too much money is being spent on road construction that makes traffic worse, what ideas do you have that can help that?
Well, I think a lot, we're, we see it all over the city at this stage, it seems to be more road construction than ever, uh, and I think that's a substantial part because of the stimulus dollars that we got, uh, in the city that have to be spent by a particular point, otherwise, we lose the dollar or so. It is aggravated to see so many streets that you go on, you know, where it's down to one lane or two lanes, or, you know, there's so much construction going on, but I think it's because, uh, I think, Jim, is that right, D-Dot has to get a lot of these things done very quickly, otherwise, we will lose the benefit of the federal dollars that were given to us to be able to do that. I suspect that D.C. is not the only place that's involved in this, because stimulus dollars, of course, run across the country, and, uh, everybody is moving quickly to try to spend them- of course, went across the country and everybody is moving quickly to try to spend those dollars. So, you know, it is inconvenient. I can't argue that it's not. But at the same time, I'd rather see us take every dollar we can get to fix up our streets because they will last for 15 to 20 years and split if somebody else is paying for it.
Okay, we have a question from the city.
My name is Commissioner Arjen Boni. I'm in this area.
Oh, you're the mayor, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Two questions I have. I have been working with the Rosario School about the parking in the area. I've been here several times talking with them, and we are working to find a way to solve that problem. And the issue I want to address with you, you mentioned that any contractor that is coming to the District of Columbia, if they are hiring new people, that they need to hire 51% of the residents, what if they are not hiring younger? Because that is what is going on now. That's why our people are not getting the job where they are coming, the broad crowd all the way to DC and nobody hires nobody. Look at all the road construction. How many residents in the District of Columbia are working there? All these contractors, when they come here, they don't hire nobody. We need to do something about it. We need to make them to commit themselves to be resident. We need people to work. All our youth are not working. They commit to work. We can pay for them to go to jail, but we cannot use one dollar of that money to help our youth to become a productive citizen in what is in DC. We need to do something better. We need to work so hard, and we need to do it fast.
Well, first of all, the last year, the council appropriated $780,000 to hire compliance officers for the First Source agreements. What they were supposed to do was to check these contracts, check these jobs, check the reports, you know, take the reports that people were turning in and really determine if in fact these people really were living in the District of Columbia. I hear it all the time. And unfortunately, not one dollar of that was spent to be able to hire compliance officers, which really reduced our ability to be able to have the kind of aggressive oversight that we had envisioned for First Source. And frankly, I completely agree with you. And that is, there's something that needs to be done is that if you get a contract from the city, you are obligated to hire 51% of the new hires from the District of Columbia. And if you don't do that, your contract ought to be taken away from you, period. And you shouldn't get another contract either in the District of Columbia for failing to hire people from our city. You know, why should we, you know, we talk about insult to injury. You know, we can't tax income at a source. So the money that's paid to people who don't live in the District of Columbia then goes outside the city, and we can't even reach to it. I'm all aware that 70% of the people who work in the District of Columbia live outside the District of Columbia. Only 30% of our workforce actually lives in the city. So when those opportunities present themselves and we don't take advantage of them, that's our fault. That is a dollar that is lost, that is a job that is lost, and I completely agree with you, Commissioner Akaboni, that there's something that needs to be done is take the contract away from these people. I want to, before we take the next question, I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by my colleague, and I'm gonna say it again, he really dislikes me calling him new, so I'm not gonna call him new. He has now been on the council almost two years. He is the newest member of the council of the District of Columbia, and he has been at every one of these town hall meetings, and that is Councilmember Large Michael Brown. Oh, I'm sorry, there's a tommy over there. And he, I miss my colleague standing on the side over here in the front. He too has, but he hosted the first run and set the tone for these. We were down at the Fourth High Public Charter School. We had a thousand people, right? Councilmember Thomas that were there that night. And please join me in saying our welcome and good evening to our colleague, our friend, Councilmember Harry Thomas Jr. By the way, there's a young man who asked a question earlier about bullying, and I told him that you had introduced some legislation just today. Where is the young man who asked that question? If you could get with Mr. Thomas before you go, he can explain to you what his legislation would do. Yeah, every member of the council, it doesn't happen often, but every member of the council, all 12 of us joined with Councilmember Thomas in co-sponsoring that legislation.
Mr. Gray, welcome to Ward 1 as well. My name is Egele Anderson, her holiness, and I serve as the chairperson of ANC 1B of which rose Mary Dr. Boni. I'm sure that other ASCs in the house, with the ASC stand. All the ASCs in the house. They were really hard in Ward 1, and we are glad that they are here tonight. My question tonight, I came from the vigil that was held for the young man that was killed at DC 9 this week. And we believe that the crime rate, we've been getting a lot of the emails about the rise in crime in Ward 1 and across the city. We want to know whether or not you're gonna increase the police force in Washington DC because the crime rate obviously has not decreased. It seems to be increasing, and even with the newspaper commentaries about the crime that's occurring at funerals, at these sacred places, it's just a travesty of justice. And I think you mentioned earlier about doing something about creating an opportunity for more police officers to live in the district. And if that is possible, that might help with the safety of the community as a whole. And we're just glad that you're here, and we certainly support all that you've been saying and doing for the District of Columbia.
I'm not going to stand here tonight and suggest if we're gonna be able to hire more police officers because, for two reasons. One, we don't have the money right now to hire more police officers. When I first came on the council, I think it was my second or third year, second year, we put money in the budget to hire up to 4,250 police officers. And we couldn't get there, right, Jim? One, because we were losing 20 offices a month. That takes 240 new offices just to stay even with where you are. But it also is pretty clear that you could only get through the academy, I think about 100 to 100, I don't know what it is, 100 to 200 offices a year. So it was very difficult to increase the numbers. But now we're in a situation where we don't have the money to hire new police officers. The reality is that we have probably more police officers per capita in the District of Columbia than any other city, especially if you look at all the other, you know, law enforcement units that operate in the city. But the issue is what you put your finger on, and that is how do we deploy our officers? First of all, I think having more officers living in the city will be a law enforcement technique in and of itself. Imagine, when you ride down the street and see a police cruiser parked in a parking space, doesn't it make you think twice? I'm not saying anybody here is a crook, but it does make you, you pay attention to that. And secondly, having more police officers on the streets. I think we have now 300 police officers who are deployed into, you know, actually being on beats, and we need to do more of that. We have other ways to do it. People can be on bicycles. We have segways now. We have motorbikes. There's a variety of ways to get police officers more into our communities. And, you know, we talk a lot about community policing, and we have made some strides in that regard. But when police officers get to know the people who live in their community, they get to know the businesses, it is a crime-fighting technique in and of itself. One of the things I think we should be proud of is the fact that homicides are four decades low in the District of Columbia. And we should feel good about that. I don't know, you know, Prince George's County is down, the surrounding area is down. I don't think we specifically know why it's down, but frankly, it is down, and we ought to be happy about that. There are other crimes like sexual assaults and robberies, armed robberies that are actually up, and we need to focus on that, and some of focusing on that is with community policing.
My name is Ingrid Ivansaron. I'm with Radio Roots, a youth-led radio organization. And recently, we did a documentary on the guidance counselor ratios in DC public schools. In our research, we found out that some of our local schools, such as Cardozo and Roll Smithville, earn three times the national average, which is about 200 to 250 students. For council. How are you and your administration going to help the youth of this ward succeed since they're faced with gang and crew violence in the neighborhood?
Can you slow down over and repeat? I sort of heard the first part of it was about the counselor to student ratio, is that right? It was about the counselor to student ratio?
Yes.
Read the last part of what you just said.
How are you and your administration going to help the youth of this ward succeed since they're faced with gang and crew violence in the neighborhood?
Well, again, I think it's more than just the schools that are involved in that. When I talk about community policing, I'm not gonna repeat that answer, but I think community policing is a big part of it. I know Jim Graham has had a lot of concern, a lot of work on gang activity. We need to recognize that often times, gangs are a substitute for family life. I happen to be a big proponent of the I Like the Robic Leader program. Is Alonso Holloway still here? There he is. Stand up, Mr. Holloway. I've known him for a long time. He is somebody who has done a great job in the Robic Leader program. That's a program we need to build on. And frankly, we have organizations like Root and others in the city that we need to try to work with in order to get more people deployed on the street. Somebody asked me at the very first town hall meeting, you know, was I going to, what was I going to do about putting dollars, at least that we have dollars, into youth organizations? What we need to do is create an initiative that says, "This is for combating youth violence." And then we need to have competitive ranks within that so that organizations that do that work have to develop their proposals, they will compete for those dollars. We would focus those dollars specifically on certain areas. We know that the areas of Ward 1, for example, where youth violence is substantially high, we know areas of Ward 8, areas of Ward 7. Those are the areas that we should focus on, and we should have organizations have to demonstrate that they're good at this and they compete for those dollars.
Ross, him? Behind you.
Greetings, Chairman Gray.
How you doing?
You may or may not remember me, but I'm a parent from the DC public school system, and I have had children in school system for 20 years. We collectively sought to keep one public school open, which I'm sure you're familiar with. I'm not so sure that everyone here is familiar with. So I'll just briefly elaborate. This school represents a mantra of one city. It represented the entire city with respect to children from each ward. It represented every economic, social status.
It's Hardy?
It's Hardy! Exactly. And so, we want to know, and now, unfortunately, what we said earlier, for the people who don't understand, Hardy is a school that was in complete harmony with the students, with the parents, with the teachers, with the entire school resonating with musical harmony, including the program, which had art, music, education, and it met higher standards than other schools in the area. The school was unceremoniously deconstructed, and the children are suffering. As we said, the children suffer. And now that Chancellor Reed has resigned, I hope that your new chancellor, Ms. Henderson, would be here to see if in fact, how long she will let this school continue to hemorrhage and continue to be deconstructed, and when in fact, you will begin to reconstruct the school by bringing back the illustrious principal.
Well, I said this the other day, the issue came, we had a student from Hardy who had been to two of these town hall meetings. She was at the Ward 5 meeting, she was at the Ward 3 meeting, and she was quite eloquent in, as you were, expressing the situation at Hardy. First of all, I have no idea why Patrick Pope was removed as the principal. He was supposedly given an assignment to go off and plan a new school, an art school or something like that, which has little, no hope of ever seeing the light of day. You know, we have a situation in Ward 5 where we don't even have one middle school. So that, you know, as we look at the priority list of things that need to be done, a new arts school, that's what it's supposed to be, is gonna be very low on the priority list. So there's no reality to that, in my opinion. And you're right, Hardy, if there ever was a one-city school, it is Hardy. Hardy has kids coming from every ward in the city. 32% of the kids who go to Hardy come from Ward 7 and 8 to go across the city to get to that school every day. Now they have a part-time principal, a principal who moves between a couple of other schools, I think, and Hardy. First thing that we have to do is, we've got to bring that school back together. Hardy was the only school that over a period of 10 years met adequate yearly progress requirements every one of those 10 years. And the first thing we're gonna do is try to figure out, and I'm not gonna micromanage the schools, I can tell you that, but I want to work with interim chancellor to try to get a full-time principal back at Hardy's school. And by the way, by the way, by the way, I hope you will get a chance to meet Kaia Henderson if you haven't met her before. I absolutely, I think we are blessed to be able to have her to step in and take over our schools. She lives in Mr. Thomas's ward. I bet she's been, she's been in the city for 13 years. She's a graduate of Georgetown University. She's worked with our schools now for a number of years. And really, as somebody who everybody agrees is the perfect choice to be the interim chancellor. So I hope everybody will work with her to make this a successful experience. I know she is thrilled about it and looks forward to working with everybody. She was out to the Ward 2 meeting last week. I think she will be out to the Ward 8 meeting later this week, and I'm gonna encourage her to get out too, which I don't have to, she'll do it anyway, to get out of the schools and meet with some of these parent groups and of course, meet with the kids. What, on the cable channel? By the way, she has a cable channel, doesn't she? Yeah, DCPS has the cable. Are we at the, are we at the end, Jim? All right. Well, you know what? I want to, I want to once again thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to, I want to, before Jim closes up, we want to bring Bibi Otero down. Go on, Bibi. Don't get away that easy. Hang on, everybody, hang on, hang on. It is her, it is her birthday. I'm gonna ask, where's Mrs. Williams? Where's Mrs. Williams? I'm gonna have Mrs. Williams, who can sing, by the way. I'm gonna ask her to lead us. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Biddy. Happy birthday to you. All right. I want to thank Jim Graham again, and we're gonna ask him to close this out. Jim?